The mindset that we took this year as we started to plan out the year was how do we redefine the high school experience? Yes, we have a traditional high school where kids come, they can take their core courses, they can take their electives, there's a variety of clubs and athletics and fine arts and performing arts for students to be involved in. But what is the next step outside of a traditional high school setting? The objective that we set out with and to frame the start of the year was redefine opportunities and experiences available to students on their pathway towards graduation. So what does that really mean? We have to tailor experiences to meet our students. No longer is it students walk through the doors of Hamilton High School and there's a mold that they have to fit into. Times are changing. We have to tailor what we provide students that meet their needs so that when they graduate in four years, they have a diploma that they can take out, they can be career ready, they can be enlist ready, they can be enrollment in college ready, different opportunities that we have to provide kids a skillset for, for that they're ready to do. We set down a path last year to look at data. We wanted our teachers to use data to drive their instruction. We wanted them to have student engagement. We wanted them to be reflective in their practice. State report card comes out and those stars start to fill up at Hamilton High School. The end goal is to see how many stars you can fill up. Five stars in progress, five stars in gap closing, and three stars in performance. Three stars is average. That's the middle mark. That's what we're shooting for, but we want to go above and beyond that. Gap closing in progress could not be done without the hard work of our students and our staff. I'd like to first make that very well known. And that's a long haul from August till you take the test in April and May and then you get your results and then we ask kids to go home and have fun for a couple of weeks and then they come back to do it all over again. That process has changed. Our teachers, they're looking at ways to engage their students. We want students to be excited when they come into the classroom. We want our students to be happy to be here and we want our teachers to feel the same way. Kids work harder for people that they like and they enjoy and that's what we're trying to have our, our, our staff and our students do. The performance piece of that with the academic achievement, the state measures the proficiency are higher. We still have a ways to go with that, but with the work of our elementary schools and our middle schools, working on a growth mindset with what our students and our staff are doing, that achievement gap will continue to close and will continue to fill stars up as we move forward in this district. We can't forget the data path and the student engagement path and focusing on our areas that we need to improve in. So this school year, we had two populations that really knew a focus was, was to be, to be made to make sure that they are able to thrive in whatever environment that we put them in. We have a large population of English language learners at Hamilton High School. Right now, our current model, we have three English language support specialists that are with us. Not only do they have resource rooms where they work in small groups with some of our highest need students with, with the language gap, but they are actually now moving into core content classes. So you will have an ELL tutor that is moving into a history, a science, and English, and a math. And it's not for translation purposes, it is solely to help those students be immersed in the language. Instead of pulling kids out and working with language, we feel like they are better suited around their peers so that they have that immersion. The second focus is our special education. Our special education students need a more intensive intervention. We don't believe in pulling kids out away from the curriculum and the content with their peers, but we create a period where their intervention specialists are allowed to focus on their specially designed instruction, which are those gaps that kids need to help access grade level content. We have a more intentional focus on that. Instead of a larger group, it's more intentional with teachers creating a schedule where they're allowed to work with four or five of the kids on their caseload on specific skills. These are both models that are continuing to grow through the end of this year and hopefully be in full force and be even made better by the time Christmas comes around next year. Lastly, I want to talk about is graduation rate. We're very proud of our graduation rate at Hamilton High School, but the thing with achieving a high graduation rate and getting to this mark is maintaining and moving forward. Ninety-seven percent is, is pretty good and we're happy with it. We would obviously love a hundred percent, but we're going to continue to maintain and with maintaining, offer programs and opportunities for kids to be successful and not just meet our bar or the checkmarks that the state requires us to do for a kid to reach a diploma. The other component to this is we're going to start looking at our district graduation rate. With Miami School coming to main campus next year, we're going to look for opportunities for our Miami School students to be engaged in different aspects of their programming to where they are getting a diploma, where they are going to have career ready and skill ready as well, that not just will boost our district rate, but it's going to boost our community also. So that creates these pathways and these are the opportunities and pathways. I want to take a few minutes. Obviously you have your traditional high school experience, which is what I started to talk about. Kids come in the door, they take seven periods a day, they get to eat lunch, they go home. That has been going on since the beginning of time and that is the standard traditional high school that you know of. Times are changing, as I said before. We have a partnership with Early College Academy that Mr. Holbrook has worked on with Miami, where we are starting to get students obtain an associate's degree and their high school diploma simultaneously. Currently, we have nine students that are in that program as juniors. Right now, the recruitment process, we have 12 that are already signed up and going through the enrollment process with more coming each day. So that nine to 15 mark is what we're striving for each and every year. Mr. Smallwood at the freshman campus has a cohort of students that actually took an elective about college skills, study skills, and how to prepare yourself for college. Those 25 students are going to roll into the high school next year and they're going to have even more preparation to enter the Early College Academy as a junior. But that's another pathway for a college career, a college ready student. We have a partnership with Marshall High School. Every day, we're talking to parents and students about the opportunity at Marshall High School. Marshall High School allows some of our students a trade that allows them a credit recovery piece where they're going to be able to graduate on time. The, the vast options that Marshall High School have is another pathway for our students that sometimes feel defeated and they don't feel like they can cross that finish line, but the staff at Marshall High School is another great opportunity. The Butler Tech Career Exploration and then the Butler Tech Programs in general are simultaneous. Career Exploration is a sophomore based program. Sophomores are able to come into this program and they learn about Butler Tech's offerings, whether it's on main campus or if it's at one of Butler Tech's campuses. These sophomores not only get a variety of different job exposures, but they're also able to earn a 12-point industry credential in hospitality and tourism. So I think we ended up having a total of 125 students earn that credential at the end of the first semester. So what does that credential mean? We have students that don't always meet the state testing requirement that the state requires for a graduation in, in English and, and algebra. So without that, without those passing scores or competent scores, we have to find another avenue or pathway. A 12-point industry credential will settle that expectation of a passing grade on the state assessment. So for your test takers that don't do very well, we have another opportunity that's not a barrier for graduation for our students. Our various Butler Tech programs that we have on campus, there are waiting lists that we have now, which is always a good thing. We want as many students as possible to stay on our campus and be a part of Butler Tech, but to have a waiting list for our program says, says volumes of the staff that Butler Tech has put into Hamilton High School. I'd mentioned briefly the Miami School, the Miami School pathway, which will now be located on main campus next year. That's kind of an, under construction right now. We're working on space of what that's going to look like. We're looking at staffing, we're looking at process and procedure, but Miami School is another opportunity for our kids that will be able to have different exposures now while they're in the Miami School to have different pathways towards graduation, not solely just credit acquisition and the, the state testing requirements. We continue to boost our CCP offerings and our AP offerings with our work for Miami and Sinclair. They're always offering us new avenues for kids to take and we want to challenge our high, our high flyers. We want kids that are interested in going into a four-year school to be able to start working on those credits, but mainly to find what's your passion? What are you really into? We have a lot of history offerings, we have psychology offerings, we have math offerings that are very high level that challenge our students and I think that is one of the best avenues that we, that we can do for our kids is if you want to be challenged, there, there's not a barrier to that. We can give you that college experience while you still walk the hallways at Hamilton High School. Our enlistment, our NJROTC, which we're extremely proud of, they just got back from Atlanta, Georgia from our Orin Tieri National Championship. I think our freshmen finished seventh out of 35 teams. It was fantastic. Captain Everwine and Gunnery Sergeant McAllister, they do a fantastic job with our kids. They have a quick turnaround to go to Pensacola, Florida for Drill Nationals next week. If you want the top-notch experience of what it's going to be like to be an enlistee, those two right there are going to give every experience possible. It's not just about the enlistment, but it's the exposure outside of Hamilton that they're giving students that, that we couldn't be very, any more proud of. The last one I want to talk about is going to be the main focus here that these folks are going to talk about when I, when I'm finished here. We had just recently partnered with Sinclair University through a pre-apprenticeship program. A few weeks ago, the state of Ohio Pre-Aprenticeship has approved our plan for Hamilton High School and we are now certified and licensed that we can be a pre-apprenticeship as a pathway towards graduation. There's some people that are not here tonight that I need to make sure that I mention. Bridget Adams, who is our transition coordinator, Megan Horsemeyer, who is a state support 13 specialist for our district, my administrative team, Mr. Jeremiah Henson. All of those members have put tireless work into getting this plan ready for approval and the state has finally done that. So what does that mean that we have an approved pre-apprenticeship through the state? What this means is we're now able to create opportunities for students to explore various career pathways and develop workplace skills before graduating high school. We're going to take time to build into content and curriculum, soft skills, job skills. Kids are going to learn not just what it is to work, but how to work. The next piece to this is that we are going to acquire partnerships throughout our community where kids are able to intern, they're able to obtain employment, they're able to have field trip exposure to even learn about what is out there. When you complete this pre-apprenticeship program through us, you will earn a 12-point industry credential and an Ohio Means Jobs seal for your graduation. You will be work-ready when you cross the stage in May with your diploma. Instead of saying, so what? Now you're able to say, I'm employed and this is where I go to work tomorrow. This is another pathway towards graduation for those students who cannot show competency, competency and meet that state score that they are required to measure. This will replace that. I don't need you to be a good test taker, but if you're a hard worker and you have a passion, we're going to help find that and we're going to get you ready for that field. Lastly, this is going to do nothing, but it's going to strengthen the Hamilton community. We have great kids, 1,800 of them that are on campus right now, and they can all learn how to give back and be productive back to our community. Businesses will thrive. We have a product that I am excited to present to them and the kids are excited as well because they are looking forward of how they can give back and how they can make the next step forward should they choose a career pathway in their life. I'm now going to introduce Mr. Jesse Funston. He's going to discuss more in-depth some of these fields that we are starting with, with this pre-apprenticeship and how these beginning steps have come to light.
Thank you, John. So Mr. Zary was up here, he was talking about the idea of this pre-apprenticeship and more big picture. I have two areas to talk with you about tonight, one of them being information technology, the other one hospitality and tourism, two things that we have been working on over the past months to get in place. The first one that I'm going to jump into, bear with me as I try to get this. Big shout out to Dustin Mundy, he's one of our, our tech directors. He has worked tirelessly with us in getting a partnership with Forward Edge. Forward Edge is our tech support company that we partner with in the district. They have come on board to partner with us for a pre-apprenticeship opportunity. And what this looks like, beginning next year, we're going to target five juniors or seniors that are interested in pursuing a career in some kind of tech support. And what we have done is those students are actually going to be from first semester next year through the end of the year, working to have real world experiences and gain some actual skills in the field of tech support. So if you look on here, we look to identify some basic tasks that Forward Edge would want these students to have if they were looking to hire them at the end of this internship. So identifying computer parts, deconstructing and reconstructing them, they said part harvesting, which is kind of taking apart and recycling, repairing devices, and then ultimately shadowing a technician. The idea behind this is at the end of the internship, the student has the basic skills that Forward Edge would want to potentially hire them. So if Forward Edge is looking or looking to hire, we have students at Hamilton High School that should have first dibs on those jobs and an entry position with that company. The student is not just learning skills that they might apply somewhere, but can come out of it with an actual opportunity. This is the one that we have built out because we have the partner in the school that we are able to collaborate with on a daily basis. We are using this as the blueprint to incorporate some other community businesses as well. We're looking at hospitality and tourism as the second one. So on March 31st, we have a breakfast or informational session with some local community businesses. We're looking small businesses around Hamilton. The idea is for them to look at kind of the blueprint that we have with Forward Edge and what might that look like for their company? So that is getting students out into the community and you're thinking, you know, part of the school day, they are going to go work in a pre-apprenticeship so they're volunteering some services, but learning skills to work for that company. And ideally, you know, it's an interview opportunity for that student. The company has the opportunity to get help, to get our students out in the community, but at the end of the day, that student should be workforce ready for that job at the end of it and hopefully it ends in employment. If you, that is something that you want to check out, we are running that on March 31st. That's going to be in the media center over at the high school. I know we have a couple of businesses that are already onboard to be there, I believe Chamber of Commerce and then some other local companies are going to be there as well, just looking to support us and get in on the ground floor of this. Ultimately, what we would like to do with this in the long run is open this to other career paths. So if a student is at the high school and they have an interest in a career, we would like to be able to offer them a pre-apprenticeship, you know, five years down the road where if I'm interested in a healthcare field, if I'm interested in, you know, construction, manufacturing, we can get them hours onsite and when students leave Hamilton High, they are ready to be employed and hopefully have an employment opportunity the day they walk out the door. And next up, I'm going to introduce Aaron Watkins, or is it Mr. Mulberg? Mr. Mulberg is next, sorry. I'm going to get the slideshow back up. Joe Mulberg.
So one thing we're finding that I think is really powerful, when we've been reaching out to a few businesses, just kind of pitching the idea of just testing the waters, what we're finding in one example is with Forward Edge, they're saying, you know what? We were already seeing a gap in, in our, in our skills and in our workforce. So we're already kind of wondering, how can we bring on this next generation of workers? And what's been really powerful for us is to say, hey, I, I, I'm not going to say we have all the answers right now, but what I'd love to do is partner with you on the, this on-the-ground moment that we have. And so it was a really organic working with Forward Edge on that and I'm excited to continue to see where it, where it expands. So you might be wondering, you know, what are the requirements? What's been approved by the state for our pre-apprenticeship? There's a few major requirements. One is that students would receive work readiness skills. And our goal is to really weave this inside of the experience. We're going to have a mentor at the school, we'll also have a mentor at the workplace. And the goal is that they would be able to partner together ultimately to boost those skills in our students. Additionally, as Mr. Zary said, we're also working on weaving these skills into our classes that students are already in. We're partnering with our English teachers and our math teachers to say, hey, where in your curriculum could we pair some of these work readiness skills into what students are already doing? And to me, that's really where we can make a lot of that impact in the work that kids are already doing. Additionally, they're asking that students would explore career clusters. Currently, in our, in our kind of rhythm of work at the high school, there's two times of year where students attend what we call a future planning day. About 33 local businesses and organizations come into our gym and students, they'll, 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 they'll work around from group to group, get to know a little bit more about what's offered out there right now in our community for work. One thing we've started to do this year is already beginning to cluster those groups so that when a kid shows up, they're not wandering around aimlessly, but they know a little bit more about themselves and the type of work they're interested in and so they can start making those connections. We're going to start working a touch more with Ohio Means Jobs to really take this event and to, to boost it even more to benefit students as they explore those career clusters. Additionally, and I think most importantly, the goal is that students would participate in, in, in a meaningful internship. And then at the end of it, that they would demonstrate the application of the knowledge that they've gained. They're going to, we're going to partner this with the Ohio Means Jobs seal. Ohio said, hey, here's about 12 to 14 skills we want to see in students as they leave high school. And what we want to do is not just have, you know, some random person that, that one of our students has worked for in the past say, yeah, I think they've got that skill, but we want some of our local businesses saying, yes, this student is demonstrating responsibility in the workforce and here's where I've seen it. They are ready to go to work for you, Ohio. Next, I want to, 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 to give Ms. Watkins an opportunity to show you how, you know, we're not just providing these opportunities for students, but we're also striving to empower our staff to continue to engage our students in multiple other ways as well.
As we continue to redefine what the high school experience looks like for a student, we are working to improve that product that Mr. Zary talked about, that we are, that we are giving to the community. So in doing that, we are working to grow our culture. We have, excuse me. We've got here in these pictures, you can see our students taking ownership of their space. We've got our public arts group creating and building that Big Blue Way mural that we have in our cafeteria. We talked about the Big Blue Way a little bit last year and that is our positive behavior supports where we recognize students for the good behaviors that they're showing, so reinforce those. So we've got our ready, respectful, and responsible model up there, our three pillars there. And this is the main area in which we do our recognition and we have our ticket drop and things like that. We do have a lot of great things looking forward into the fourth quarter here. We are going to have a class competition between the juniors, the sophomores, and the seniors to see which class really is the best. We also are partnering with our Better Together Club at school where we will be putting on a walk and rollathon where we will increase the inclusivity of some of the programs that we show at our school as well as running this alongside of some campaigns such as reduce, uh, excuse me, erasing the R-word and promoting autism awareness and acceptance. So as we're building these, these people that are going, getting ready to go into the community, we want to make sure that we've provided them these experiences at the school level that all around meets the whole person and creates a person that we're proud to present to community. As we do that also, we've got some of the empowerment of our teachers and the ways that they are working together to increase that instruction and create the environment within the classroom that provides those engaging opportunities that we had mentioned earlier. There were some walkthrough opportunities, there's an instruction group that meets and they go through and there's peers, they walk around as teachers and they get to observe classrooms and see what happens in other teachers' classrooms and, and the engagement that occurs within there. We've got some look fours that is the positive behavior rapport and collaboration as well as looking at how allowing these students to collaborate with one another, how it can help bolster those aha moments and letting those kids work together to engage and learn.
So in a nutshell, the future and the growth for us are pathways and opportunities. If we do our job and we implement these two things, we're going to create a culture at Hamilton High School that's a whole lot different than what it's ever been before. Each student that walks through there is going to have a purpose, they're going to have a plan, and there's going to be an end result that they're going to be able to see, use, and be successful with in this, in this community. And those are the, those are the results that they look close when you look at the arrows, but we know they can be far away. But without the support that we can provide, that you provide us, it's not possible. This is the first step in this journey and we look forward to making sure that we're in this for the long haul so that our kids have the best opportunities to be successful, to give back to the city that's, that's done them so well. And then the last thing is we will see you soon, May 19th at 7:30, Friday Night Lights this year at, at the Shwarm. So 7:30 is, is the start time. Thank you for your time, we appreciate it. If there's any questions, we would love to-
Just comment, John. In my prior life as a banker and then in United Way, it amazes me how, how in tune you are with the business community. Businesses have been screaming for years to have kids ready. They, it, it's not so much about going to college, but it was ready to come into the workforce. And not everybody wants to go to college and not everybody has that skillset. So the fact that you're giving our kids opportunities and keeping them here in the community is a huge economic boom for us and economic development tool. I'm sure that not only when the city goes out to try and encourage people to come, businesses to come here, when they see what the, the high school is doing and what the school district is doing with these kids, that's act, that's a big plus. So I know that you've had some, it's been a tough year, you guys all, that's not an easy school, I'm sure to manage, but just again, just, I, I am so proud of what this district does and proud of the, the teachers, administrators, and you just have done a great job and that's proof here.
Thank you.
Totally agree. Once again, thank you guys for coming and presenting, definitely enjoyed it. Again, hats off to you, to you and your team for doing such a fantastic job. Two things, one of the big things that really, really jumped out for me was I love the, the approach that you're not trying to do a one-size-fits-all education because as we know, every kid does not learn the same, every kid's pathway will not be the same. So I'm glad that, that, that the exposure is there and opportunity for these kids to be great in whatever way that looks like for them and their pathway. So I love that and I applaud that. I'm so glad that you guys are being intentional about that and making sure that you create those opportunities. So it's a pleasure to be here as a board to make sure that we're all working together to make sure that that's an opportunity for our kids here in Hamilton. And I love the pre-apprentice program as well, that's amazing, that is absolutely amazing. All the hard work is definitely going to pay off and being able to see the fruits of that labor and all the investment of time, energy, and effort and that, and I'm always big on making sure that these kids know that there are amazing opportunities here in Hamilton and that we are a part of creating those. And so definitely allowing our businesses to have people here that, that, that live in our city, that actually work in our city, that have been educated in this, in this school district. So that's amazing for me to know that, that our kids do not have to go off into other places to be able, that they can stay right here in their city should they choose and have amazing opportunities to be able to support their family and also somewhere that's filled with culture and that's really on the move. So I'm excited about that and thank you guys for coming again to present, I appreciate it, all you do and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. I agree with Pastor Shaq. It's, it's refreshing to see it's not a cookie cutter high school anymore like it was when we went through school. When we went through the school, it was, you know, prepare them for college. And if you weren't college-bound, well, you know, just suck it up and, you know, work it, get your diploma, but it didn't train people for the future. It didn't give them a career path, an opportunity. And like Pastor Shaq said, not all students, no, no one's the same. We know that. They don't learn the same, they don't have the same ambitions in life. And a lot of kids don't want to go on for a further education. They want to get a good paying job, they want the skills for that and employers want that. And so we're giving it to the students and we're giving it to employers now. This apprentice program is just awesome and I'm excited for it. And I think it'll be great for the city of Hamilton, it'll be good for the district. And honestly, I think with you needing, meeting the needs of the students, what they want to do in life, instead of telling them what they want to do in life, is keeping kids in school and that's why your graduation rate is going up and I, I really commend you for it.
Thank you.
Mr. Zary, I may be a little biased, but I have to say that, like my colleagues here have said, it's not a one-size-fits-all. You have devised a way to, at our high school, there's something for everybody, no matter what it is. The pre-apprentice program, a, a few months ago, we actually had a business come in that wanted to hire our students and teach them the job and have them a job when they get ready to go and graduate. We've heard that from others since then. So this apprentice program is, is just off the hook and you, you four do an excellent job with your staff, you've got a great staff. So thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you. We're actually going to visit one of those businesses that you're talking about tomorrow. This grows daily. I mean, it's, we have to slow down at some point because to be fully implemented, we, we have to make sure that we're doing it the right way first, but you know, manufacturing is not far away, a pre-apprenticeship in healthcare is not far away and people want to be a part of it. So that says a lot where we're not even off the ground in full flight yet and people still- still want to start to be a part of this. That says volumes of our community.
Well, I guess I'm left, so I just, thanks for the, for being here. But I know we've talked about how good this is for our community and it's our schools, but for the kids. I think every high school kid I've ever known, very few of them, I should say, have a clear idea of what they want to do in life. And it's a scary world. They look past graduation, it's scary. And you've given them hope of things they can do. And like Dave said, you know, back in the old days, Maggie were there too.
Yeah.
I know. We were, if you didn't go to college, you were looked down upon. And it was like, oh, you're going to do a manufacturing job or this. And that's not the case anymore. We're giving these kids opportunities that they've never had before to make a life for themselves, to find financial freedom, to realize things that they never thought they'd have. And I applaud that. I really do. I looked at, as I'm watching that screen with all these different pathways, I'm just amazed how many ways these students can find their way in life. And we give that opportunity to them. I guess one of the questions is, I see that, and I see all these different opportunities. Are we missing a segment of our student body? Have you seen a group that you go, "Boy, I wish we could offer such and such"? And you may not be, maybe you have an idea of what, but it looks like you got everything covered.
And I think as we move forward, it's going to be identifying what's a greater need. And I think there are some, you know, for instance, we have a functional cohort where, you know, Bridget Adams, I mentioned her name earlier. Our students with some of the most and the highest needs, they're already working with Forward Edge, putting computers together. They're already doing it. So we knew that was a high need, we front-loaded them, they're out in the community, they go to businesses, they're already in these apprenticeships and these internships in real time. You know, we also have our ELL population that we had discussed earlier. Maybe these two pathways aren't the best for them as far as the pre-apprenticeship goes, but what career clusters would be successful for them? If we have bilingual students, how can we utilize that skill set?
Exactly.
So I think as we go and we're reflective of our practice and our results, we always have to continue to say, are we meeting the needs of who we need to, and is it the best opportunity for our kids?
Well, last week, or two weeks ago, we learned about some of the things going on in our special needs population and providing, what, the dog biscuits?
Yeah.
And all that. And so I applaud that for the creativity that goes into and the stamina that it takes to run all these different things. And hats off to you guys for all that you do and for the staff that's up there too. So thanks, guys.
Thank you.
John, Jesse, Aaron, and Joe, I could not be prouder of where we are as a high school. I think some things that we haven't even mentioned, five stars with gap closing and five stars with progress, that is significant. That means that we are meeting every demographic, and they aren't growing at expected level, but much higher than that. That's critical, and I think part of the reason that you've been able to do that is that you're connecting them in these experiences. And an engaged student is one that's going to come to school every day, going to produce effort, going to continue to grow. And I think these opportunities are critical. And you didn't even touch on the vast majority of extracurricular opportunities that our students have. We're just talking about opportunities during the day from internships and programming within the building. That's a whole different presentation. Two-year school, four-year school, workforce-ready, career tech-type training. We've got students that go to, into every single one of those segments. And all of those segments provide, we are providing a foundation for opportunity. And I told you this when we sat down and talked two years ago, our goal is to have a student qualify for every single one of those pathways, and it's up for them as to which pathway they choose. And you guys have done an incredible job with this. I'm going to leave you with this. 24 months ago, we had maybe four or five students internshipping somewhere in the city. As of today, we have 460 students interning in 105 different companies throughout the city of Hamilton. And that's a lot through the work that you're doing, and we continue to grow that through our apprentice programs. Exposure and experiences are critical for students, and that is what we're providing. And once again, you know, our continuum is so large of students that we have there, and we are doing a great job with opportunity. And I like what you said, every year's a different challenge, and there may be different needs and different programs that would be appropriate two years from now that maybe aren't now. And looking at that and reflecting on that and continuing to grow with that, I think is critical for this entire district. And it's a healthy mindset, but it's, I will tell you, it's not typical of many high schools. Many high schools are very traditional, and thinking outside the box, I think we're well ahead of the curve with that. Thank you all for your leadership. Thank you for your endurance, your long nights, and, you know, take a deep breath, but we're glad to have you here, and, you know, we look forward to sitting on the stage at graduation and watching, you know, over 500 students receive their high school diploma in late May. Thank you all.
Thanks so much.
Okay. We are going to move on to, again, thanks so much for the presentation. Really very unbelievable what you're doing. So we're going to move on into our work session.